Good evening. I call this meeting of the Wallingford Board of Education to order. It's Monday, February 24th, 2020. And the first order of business, and I'm checking to see if folks are paying attention to directions, please, please stand as you are able for the pledge, and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have asked you to remain standing for a moment of silence from Mr. Vernon Cleaves. Mr. Cleaves passed away on February 5th, 2020. He was the director of the VOAG program and the advisor for the FFA chapter at Lyman Hall High School from 1960 until his retirement in 1990. He also served on the building committees for each of the VOAG centers. So if we may please have a moment of silence for him. Thank you. Thank you. Please be seated. Mrs. Lavell, maybe please have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Allison?
Here.
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Leveque?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mrs. Raciio?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Nine members present and voting.
Thank you very much. The next item of business is student board representatives from Lyman Hall. Leah Chaffee. Good evening.
Hi, how are you guys?
Very well, thank you.
All right, so pretty short list today. Lyman Hall agricultural students participated in FFA week this past week. Attending Ag Day, they'll be attending Ag Day in the Capitol in March, so students will meet with elected officials to discuss the importance of agricultural in education. Excuse me. Freshman students will attend a statewide leadership conference in March, and the Ag Department will be hosting a regional leadership conference for alumni of Ag programs. The National Resources Committee is hosting a beach cleanup event in March. Student Council held its second blood drive of the year at the end of January, and it was our most successful in recent history. We're catching up with Sheehan, so that was a big deal for us. Sophomores will attend Credit for Life tomorrow, February 25th, at the Park and Rec. College planning meetings with juniors, sophomores, and freshmen begin in the upcoming month. The Library Media Center wanted to report that the library has undergone many exciting changes this year under our new librarian, Ms. Sagnoa, and is looking forward to expanding even more in the coming semester. Spring fling will be held on March 27th. Tonight, February 24th, is senior night for the boys hockey team. The girls basketball team competed in the SCC quarterfinals on February 22nd. The boys basketball team held their senior night on February 18th, and the cheerleading team placed third at the Cheer Your Hard Out competition at East Haven High School on February 15th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Leveque?
Yes.
I apologize, but I do want to embarrass Leah for a second, if I can.
Well...
In a good way.
In a good way, okay.
And I also have a message for two prestigious universities. Number one, Leah has been offered admission to both Harvard and Yale.
Oh, wonderful.
And now it's in their hands to give her the most money.
Definitely.
So we're starting the bid at full scholarship.
I'll take that 100%.
So if anyone at Yale or Harvard watches our humble telecast, as superintendent of schools, you would be missing out on an amazing candidate who has an incredible future ahead of herself and will make your university as proud as she's made our district. So they better get on the bandwagon. They better start writing those acceptance letters with the grant, with the funding. We're not looking at student loans here. We want funding.
We're not, yes.
And we don't want you having to work incredible work-study programs. You could do a little, because it's not bad to work and get a little dirty.
Of course.
But the fact is, we expect good scholarship funds. But I wanted to say congratulations. I know you haven't made the decision yet, but we're very, very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Wonderful. Now, it's my understanding that our usual representatives from Mark T. Sheehan High School, Julian and Marissa, are unable to attend this evening. However, we have Marissa's brother, Anthony Galicia, here for the Mark T. Sheehan Report. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. Sheehan has been very busy this month. On February 28th, the National Honor Society Leadership Committee held SAT tutoring. This also has been going on every Tuesday. On February 6th, the seniors had their cap and ground fitting. From February 10th to 13th, the SAD Club hosted their annual carnation sale. On February 19th, Michelle Rochniak and Riley Morlow performed in the Rotary Four-Way Speech Contest. On February 21st, the musical cast performed their annual Titans on Broadway as a fundraiser for their upcoming show. Currently, the Environmental Action Club is hosting a bottle and can drive. Looking ahead, on February 25th, sophomores participate in the Credit for Life field trip, where they have the opportunity to learn about saving and budgeting. On March 13th, Sheehan will hold its third blood drive of the year. On March 13th and 14th, the spring musical, Catch Me If You Can, will be performed. On March 25th, the school day SAT will be administered. In Sheehan Athletics, the boys indoor track team has concluded their season. The girls indoor track team has concluded their seasons. The girls won the SCC tournament. Both teams had many individuals qualify for state opens, which has theirs, which was this past Saturday. Olivia Dubuk placed third in the state in the 600 meter, which has qualified her to run at New England's. The girls and boys basketball team both qualified for SCCs and states. The girls unfortunately lost in the quarterfinals to Hampden, and the boys' first round starts tonight. A member and captain of the boys' basketball team, Garrett Malampi, scored his 1,000th point last week, making him Sheehan's 11th basketball player in history to accomplish this. The hockey team has also been doing very well this season. Their most recent game, they won against the Trojans. Boys' women dive will have their last home meet on Wednesday, while they honor their seniors. On February 1st, the cheerleading team performed at the SCC cheerleading competition. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Anthony, for filling in. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. You did a great job. Item five is presentation and awards, but there are no award presentations this evening. So we're on to the sixth item on the agenda, question and answer period. Are there any questions of the board from the public? Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of acceptance of a leave of absence. Make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're in executive session. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're out of executive session. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we're on to correspondence. Mr. Ross.
Thank you. We've received a donation from Mr. Derek J. from Global Street Partners LP for $500 to be used for STEM things at Highland School. We received a thank you on behalf of the students and staff of Highland School. I want to thank you for selecting Highland School, once again for the generous donation of $500 for use in science, technology, engineering, or mathematics. ExxonMobil and Global Partners LP's generosity will be put to good use to support our budding scientists and mathematicians. Plans for the donation include the purchase of supplies and books to support deeper understanding of mathematics, science concepts, and for our maker space. We are very excited about the possibilities. Once again, please accept my sincere thanks for selecting Highland School to receive this very special donation. We also received a note from Mr. Boucher, his knowledge and a gift from the Connecticut Reading Association grant of $750. We have also received a donation for the Wallingford Public Schools from the Quinnipiac Chamber of Commerce in De Neste, an amount of $5,000. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Item 10, committee reports. 10.1, the ACES representative, Mr. Votto.
Are you giving the report for January? I wasn't there for that.
I already gave the January report at the last...
At the last...
Yes.
Okay. What I did was, I gave everybody a packet. These are the items that were discussed, to make it easier for you, instead of me going through the whole thing with notes and stuff. There are some ads in there that they are doing. There is some special events, their early head start report, and if you look down a little bit, they're proposing some new bylaws for that. They're signed their ACES healthy food certificate, et cetera. Just read through this. If you have any questions, I ask that you please email our secretary, Mrs. Lavell, who will get back to me, and I'll see if I can get you answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Votto. Item 10.2, business think tank. Mrs. Costelli?
We did not have a meeting.
All right, thank you. Item 10.3, P-TAC update.
Yes, hi, good evening. At the most recent P-TAC meeting on February 11th, we were joined by Mr. Mark Deptula and Mr. Keith Santos from All Waste Inc. to discuss the status of our recycling in the schools and some possible new ideas for continuing to recycle and do our single-stream recycling. So we are in the process of looking at some other opportunities and possibilities moving forward for all of our schools. We reviewed the budget fact sheet with the committee members and participants that were there. We also had an opportunity to talk about some upcoming events and a discussion about the fact that the school climate surveys were out and they had closed on February 14th. We discussed the award ceremony that was held on December 12th at Sheehan and how we were pleased with the participation from the staff and the families. They brought their families with them for the awards and just looking to, for next year, increase the participation moving forward. And we also discussed how we are looking to, again this year, have the graduation walkthroughs at the K-2 and 3-5 schools. So the graduates this year will have that opportunity to go through and walk through the schools with their cap and gown on. So we're going to coordinate that as well.
Wonderful. And Ms. Turner, if you could give us the update on the PPS Special Education P-TAC, that'd be great.
Good evening. It's on, right? Good evening. We had the opportunity to have CPAC come and present Transition 101 to us last week. This presentation was about how parents should prepare for their child beyond high school. And really starting at age 14, all the way up through 21, how they really get their child ready for college and career, or whatever is their path beyond. We had 25 parents once again. Many new faces were there this time, which was really exciting to see. We received great feedback about the presenter. Next month, we have 211 is coming to present about crisis intervention, de-escalation, how to access different community supports if you are struggling at home with your child. So we're really excited about that. That's on March 16th at 6:00. We also are going to have a guest appearance tomorrow at Cook Hill and Parker Farms P-TAC meeting. We are bringing our robot to that meeting to kind of show the parents, and hopefully I can program it appropriately. So we're going to work on that, but we will be at Cook Hill tomorrow at 6:00 for that P-TAC meeting. We are, oh, sorry, we're getting ready for our Resource Fair, which is in April. We're starting to send out invitations to local providers and interesting community people.
Thank you very much. Plan of Conservation and Development, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, there will be a meeting this Thursday at 6:00 downstairs in the Planning and Zoning Conference Room.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Food Service Strategic Plan Committee, Mrs. Purcell. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bondi.
The Food Service Strategic Planning Meeting was held last Thursday, February 20th, at Central Office. Our first topic of discussion concerned a review of the current meal charging policy and changes and updates to present to the board for approval at a later date. It was decided that most of the current meal charge policy was sound, but still needs to be rewritten and updated a bit. We need to add an explanation, the online meal pay system, and a link for direct access on the website. Information should also be including for applying for free reduced meals throughout the school year, because a lot of parents are not aware that you can apply throughout the school year. And we also need to attach a link for that. There also needs to be an explanation of how to pay back lunch charges. And then we talked at length about our computerized point-of-sale system and how it needs to be altered to create a system of tracking which students owe what to the charge accounts, as the current system is labor-intensive and rather cumbersome. We also discussed the progress made in the possible expansion of breakfast service. I discussed the results of the meetings with Parker Farms and Cook Hill principals. We discussed how and where breakfast service would potentially be served at each school, and I presented break-even figures for each school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Forest School Window Replacement Project, Mr. Deptula?
Good evening. I have nothing new to report. Hopefully, one of these days, I'll be able to tell you that the projects are all closed out, probably around the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't believe we have any old business to come before the board. So on to item 12, Instructional Committee, Mrs. Corso and Mrs. Purcell.
At this point, there is nothing to approve regarding the instructional committee.
All right, thank you very much. On to item 13, Operations Committee, Mrs. Allinson and Mrs. Costelli.
Hello. Okay, so I'm sorry in advance, because this is quite long, because we have done a lot in the past month. So our regular operations meeting was called to order at 6:45 on February 10th, after our special board meeting ended. First topic of discussion was the financial report with Mr. Barone. We continue to trend on track to budget, with gains reported in the areas of tuition, transportation, and unemployment, as reported in January. Assuming that our tuition reimbursements are correct, we should be highly favorable at the end of the year, enabling some possible advanced purchase orders for curriculum needs, which I'll summarize next. Per our current projections, our unencumbered fund, or 1% fund, is currently sitting at around 600K, including the already reserved expense to replace the oil tank at Sheehan... Sheehan, sorry. Just over 400,000 was requested to be used to pre-arrange for some expenses for the 2020-2021 school year for various curriculum items. While the board did come to a unanimous consensus to earmark these expenses, the purchase orders will not actually be sent until further along in the school year when we are secure in our position on the 1%. We then reviewed the cafeteria reporting with Mr. Bondi. In year-on-year comparison, despite serving marginally fewer meals, less than 200, in the month of January, with the same number of service days, we generated an additional 26,000 in profits, 48,000 current year versus roughly 22,000 previous year. This was largely due to spending, reduced spending on the food and milk and payroll lines. All said, cafe services generated more revenue per day and spent less in 2020-2021 than last year, which demonstrates proper management of their resources. The board also reviewed the participation report and the improvement opportunity report, and briefly discussed the improvement opportunity that occurred in January. It is linked in the public notes, so if you have questions on what that was, please don't hesitate to look it up. Finally, we reviewed the status of facilities projects with Mr. Deptula. Mr. Ross requested further information on Sheehan softball field. My understanding of the conversation, because it was a little longer than one-sentence summary, but was that the project is just paused right now because of uncooperative weather. Mr. Ross then asked about the details of the Lyman Hall High School track repair, and basically kind of the detail around what that was. This will include general maintenance and repainting of the lines. The bid is secured, but we'll need to wait for summer. Correct? Yeah. Okay. Mrs. Costelli asked for an update on the status of bonding for the oil tank replacement at Sheehan, but we do not have an update yet. We may, I'm assuming that hasn't changed. Nope. Okay. Regarding the facility study update, Mayor Dickinson is or was arranging a meeting with a local land donor. It was more for an FYI purpose. It was not anything formal or just, you know, it's out there, so I wanted to make sure I addressed it. That's pretty much all I have for that part of my update, and I will move on to budget if there is nothing to add. Seeing nothing? All right. Oh.
Just a correction. Another correction now or later?
A correction for what?
It was the Sheehan track, not the Lyman Hall.
Oh, Sheehan track, okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't expand the what-school-that-was column, so I was... I, yeah, I just thought it was one. Thanks, Ray. Mr. Ross? It's that California upbringing, Patty. It's killing me. The Special Operations Committee meeting for the Budget Workshop was called to order at 6:00 PM on February 19th. Without adding any strategic plan budget, it is important to highlight that our sustained services budget will see an increase in our request already of 3.03%. That means that just to deliver the same services and education that we are delivering this year, we will require a budget increase of 3.03, doing nothing else in the district. As has been discussed at many prior meetings, this is largely due to increases in insurance costs, but is a much improved number over, I believe, the 4.33 that we were looking at before. So great work reconfiguring those numbers, Mr. Barone, in the emergency last-minute situation that we were in. Moving into the budget discussion, Board of Ed members discussed many of the priorities listed on the strategic plan. Since we will have approximately 1 million, based on current projections, in the 1%, it was decided to move approximately 601,000 from the strategic plan budget to request as part of the 1% planned, assuming that trajectory continues. This would still allow for previously earmarked items that I have just discussed in my previous report, plus all of the IT and safety-related items that were on the strategic plan worksheet. This brought the budget to an ask of 3.57% increase over last year's result. Due to some challenges around grant writer, all board members agreed to cut that item from the request. Ultimately, the board came to the consensus, came to consensus on an ask of 3.55% or 107,154,215. In that meeting, we have to do another vote tonight.
Actually, the increase is the 3.57.
Right.
There was a correction that we made near the end of the meeting, just to validate that number. So the number tonight that you're voting on is the 3.57% increase.
Okay, so 3.57. All right, cool. Thank you. I will update. And I'll send that back over to Linda. This included all items on the strategic plan, minus the grant writer and the communication specialist, by my understanding. I'd like to comment that considering the 3.03% increase in only sustained services, our additional ask of 0.56% for strategic projects was as conservative as we, as a board, felt comfortable, while still reporting the district's ask. This budget was a beast of a task due to changing information, but creativity and collaboration between Central Office administrators and the Board of Ed really did make this process less painful. I'd like to thank the incumbents and our wonderful staff on all levels for their patience and work, not only when crunching the numbers, but when answering my questions, since I am the newest one on this team. We certainly have more work to do once Mayor Dickinson's number comes back, and I'm looking forward to that future work. So, all of that being said, I would like to make a motion for the approval of the 2020-2021 budget in the amount of 107,154,215.
I have a question before I second this. If I second, if I second the motion, does that mean I have to vote yes?
I don't believe so.
Because I know that's...
No, it opens, you're seconding it, and then there's going to be discussion.
There'll be discussion.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if I want to, you know, that I'm still free to make a different choice. Okay, so I will second it.
Okay, so discussion on the motion.
Could you repeat the motion for me, please?
Okay, so the motion is, I make it a motion to approve the 2020-2021 budget in the amount of 107,154,215, which reflects a 3.57% increase versus last year's budgeted amount.
Thank you.
Sure. So if there's no point of discussion, we will ask Linda to do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Allison?
Yes.
Mrs. Costelli?
No.
Mrs. Corso?
Yes. Oh, hold on, hold on.
Yes.
Mrs. Purcell?
Yes.
Mrs. Raciio?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
No.
Ms. Leveque?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I do believe that we can, I don't know that we have any new business to come before the board, but under administration, we have Dr. Menzo, and I know that, I don't know if you're going to give the STEM Steering Committee update, or it could be a combination. Okay, well, why don't we start with you, and then we can go to Mrs. Allison.
Sure, so I'll kind of leave that to the end. So first of all, there's a variety of things. Number one, we do have some additional donations that I want to bring to people's attention. We're very fortunate that Mr. Hannan donated approximately in value of $350 to career coffee makers and coffee to Ponte Hill School for the Coffee Cart Kids. It's a program with students at the school, so we want to thank him for those donations, and we really are appreciative of that support. We also have Angela Bucary put together a donation. There's books that were donated through Men Press, and it's to the school libraries in the amount of $300, six copies of Finders Keepers, and four copies of India Unveiled. We also have a donation to Moran Middle School... We also have a donation to Moran Middle School of a conference table from Metro Meeting Center. Then another donation, a donation to Highland Elementary School for $100 from AT&amp;T, and it'll be used for a variety of purposes, for teachers and learning experiences in the school. So those are some additional donations. We also did receive a communication from a citizen that I said I would share with everyone, that it's in reference to what parents need to know about safe technology. And we could put this up on our, we could make this available on our bulletin board on our website, just some information about what does the science say about wireless and children, and some use. So we just wanted to bring this to your attention. We have a town person who wanted us to share this, and we felt it was appropriate to share that. So just putting that out there. Tomorrow is Credit for Life. It is our program for all sophomores across both high schools. It starts approximately 9:15 with Sheehan arriving at the Park and Rec. We have close to 100 volunteers from the community that will be there tomorrow. We're again very fortunate to have sponsors ranging from Chamber of Commerce, ION Bank, Liberty Bank. We also have the Wadsworth Foundation. We also have donations from Chick-fil-A, as well as Neils Donuts. So again, it starts at 9:15, it goes to approximately 1:30. So we're very fortunate that we have those donations, and again, this is a wonderful event. If you know anything about this event, it's an opportunity for students to experience the day in the life of their future selves, where they have to navigate a month on a salary based on the career that they choose to pursue post-high school, be it graduate schools, just four-year college, or going to the world of work. We have financial advisors, so there's volunteers who are set up to meet with the students. The students this year, like last year, they have a credit score. Their credit score was determined based on the date that they returned their permission slip. We felt, the group felt it was kind of good to connect it, because if you don't pay your bills on time, your credit score goes down. Well, if you didn't return your permission slip on time, your credit score went down. So we have some students who have excellent credit, and we have some students who have not-so-excellent credit. So our volunteers will know that, so they can talk to the students about responsibility. And that credit score factors into a lot of the activity. The mayor will be there all day tomorrow, so we're very fortunate he's coming to volunteer. He came last year, as well as the year before, but this year, he wanted to come for a full day to volunteer, so we're excited. He's actually going to be doing one of the chance wheels, so it'll be a good opportunity. We do have the police involved as well. They're there, because sometimes students get tickets, and that's part of life. So we're very fortunate. I'd like to thank Kim McLaughlin, Jane Graves, Tony Loomis, Rob Covey, and Liz Landau from Wallingford Center, Inc. and Hubcap for all of the hard work they've put into making tomorrow a great success. We were there, they were there this afternoon. We were there setting up tables, putting up posters, getting everything organized. So it was a great opportunity. We also wanted to, I also wanted to share that we have our third session of our Manufacturing Pipeline Program on Wednesday night. We have 18 participants, ranging really from students who are presently in our high school to adults in the community. We have five females in the program this session, which is the highest amount. And each week, they have been learning about different businesses that we'll be interviewing on the last evening, the sixth week of the series. So again, we're very pleased with the turnout. The quality of candidates continues to increase in terms of people who are realizing they have a little expertise, and they really want to change their career, and they want to have a better opportunity for themselves and their families. So we're very excited about this. Today, I was fortunate to be with the mayor and several others from the community at the, a special event for three students from Masonic, who are part of our medical pipeline that we started this year with adult education. So Masonic has looked and offered an application, as well as Gaylord, to employees in different roles in the organization. So actually, people today from Masonic have worked in hospitality, be it being room, cleaning rooms, or working in the food services, and they want to go into the CNA program. So they offered it to their employees, they selected three. They're paying their $900 fee, plus their testing fee and their licensure fee, if they're successful in completing the coursework. So our adult ed program is the feeder. It made perfect sense. It's no additional cost to the district. We were already doing this, it's just that we have a more, now a more focused approach. So we're very excited about this opportunity. On Thursday morning, I'll be meeting with Mr. Mara through Hubcap and EDC with local businesses in the hospitality industry. So I'll be meeting with a lot of the hotels, a lot of the restaurants, and other facilities, because we have a great hospitality program at Lyman Hall, and that's a field that is continuing to grow in Wallingford. So we're looking at potentially investigating, is there an opportunity to develop a pipeline program for hospitality in our community? So expanding it again for our students. And I love when we see at the Manufacturing Pipeline, we have two students in our Advanced Manufacturing Program, because we have over 28 students in our program this year, actually, it's 38 students, excuse me, in our program this year. So we've more than doubled it, and that's phenomenal. I also met with Mr. Covey, our Career Technical Education Coordinator, last week with a group of students who are juniors in the Advanced Manufacturing Course, and we have two from Sheehan. We haven't met with the Lyman Hall students yet, we will be doing that shortly, but we have two from Sheehan who would like to pursue the paid pre-apprenticeship program in the fall as seniors. So that would connect them with a business in Wallingford to actually work there as an apprentice for approximately 10 hours a week for the semester. And they would get paid, and they would have that real-life experience. So again, really positive opportunities going on. Going back and dialing it back to the budget, just to remind people, and I sent out an email blast to all families last week with information about how the budget decision would impact their students at each grade level. We also want to just say that on November, excuse me, November, sorry, I don't want to go backwards. Forward, April 9th, Thursday, April 9th at 6:00 PM is the town hearing on the budget in this chamber. And then Thursday, April 23rd, is the Board of Education's hearing with the Town Council at 6:30 PM in the Town Council chambers. So those are the two dates that are important for us to remember as we move forward with the budget. Before I get finally to the Center for Innovation and Design and our STEM Steering Committee, I just want to go back to the donation that Mr. Ross mentioned about Chamber of Commerce donating $5,000 this year. They have also committed to $5,000 next year. So it'll be a $10,000 donation over the next two, over this year and next year. This is incredible, because we keep piecing together donations. We have Stanley Black &amp; Decker, we have Goodwin Community College, we have Movia Robotics, we have Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have Command Aerospace, and now we have the Chamber. We are also obviously investigating other opportunities, and we'll continue to keep the board apprised of those scenarios. But again, we're really excited about their partnership with the Center, and especially a two-year commitment is extremely supportive, and we're very, very grateful for that partnership. So, that leads to the STEM Steering Committee this morning. I don't know, Ms. Allison, if you'd like to share a little bit, and I can fill in?
So, one really exciting thing for me was that we got to tour the facility, and I know they've had some open houses and stuff like that, but, you know, conflicting times and stuff. It was a really great, it was really great to see the facility and to see actually what the kids are doing, and how actually hard it is to move that little round robot around on the grid. Because I didn't try it, because I didn't want to be embarrassed, but it was pretty, it was really cool. So, we started off with the tour, and then we talked through, while we were touring, some shorter and longer-term plans for the Center, and that was great. I am not going to go through my full thing, because it's, you know, we've already gone through some of what I had. But the, I wanted to do a quick shout-out to the Wallingford Public Library and their collaboratory. That is open and running all kinds of programming, from, I believe, robotics, to embroidery, to 3D printing, to sewing machines, including Longarm, which I thought was really cool, even though I don't know how to quilt yet. But I think that we're doing so much tremendous work in that space. Another great organization that's doing a lot with relationship to STEM is the YMCA, so much so that at this point, they're looking for another person to take on more STEM projects towards the summertime, so that they can expand their summer camp programming as well. So, you know, a big, I hope those two organizations do well with that. We had some updates from the Wallingford Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, a lot of partnership between the Center for Innovation and Design and the, both the Wallingford and the New North Haven campus, and also some discussion around the possible need for a second Wallingford Boys and Girls Club, because the demand here is great, and they have quite a waiting list, versus North Haven has a small waiting list. So, beyond that, I will turn it back over to you.
Sure. The last thing I just would like to mention to the public, as well as to board members, on next Tuesday night, we'll be having an open house at the Center for Innovation and Design from 5:00 to 7:00 for families, children, anyone in the community could come by. The afternoon session from 2:00 to 5:00 is open to our teachers and our staff that might be interested to come by, see the Center. But in the evening, we really encourage you to come by. We're going to have some of the activities going, so that students and their families can see what they might experience in the Center. So we are looking forward to that. That is on the 3rd of March. And again, the Center for Innovation and Design is at Mary Fritz Elementary School, so we wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And again, students the following week, or actually, the following day in our fifth grade will be starting to use the Center actively. So all, every fifth grader will have an experience there this year, and then gradually, we'll ratchet that up for the following, the subsequent years.
I have one more thing to add to that. I thought something that was very exciting for me was, six of the eight students who went to Australia are actually building, as part of their capstone, as their capstone project, some additional programming for the Center for Innovation and Design for K-2 students, and I thought that that was wonderful, because who better to know what is interesting to kids than kids?
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I have one more thing which ties all to this together. Last Thursday, as I shared with the group, I received a text message at an ungodly hour in the morning from our friend Anne Evans, U.S. Department of Commerce, saying that she had an opportunity to send one female staff member from Wallingford Public Schools to Australia, leaving this Saturday, February 29th, coming back next Sunday, the following Sunday, for a Women in Science Symposium. And so we met, and we, through a variety of different opportunities, we, Kristi Madancy is going to go back to Australia to work on this project, but also go back to VSIC, which is the science center, to meet the students who will be coming over at the end of March, and meet the teacher coming with them, and meet the principal. So she'll be gone, she'll leave Saturday. It is fully funded by the federal government, not paid for by Wallingford Public Schools in any way, so she'll be getting her airfare covered, her housing covered, and transportation within the country as well. So we're very excited. Not many superintendents can come in on a Thursday morning and go into a group of people and say, hey, who wants to go to? I feel like Oprah, you know? But I only got to say, Australia trip for you, not you, and you, and you. That'll be next year. So we're very excited, but that's just a tribute to the fact that Anne, in her capacity as the U.S. Department of Commerce rep for the state of Connecticut, truly trusts that what we're doing in Wallingford is special, and that we're going to follow up on what we do. We're not just a flash in the pan. She would not, if you know Anne for five seconds, she is not going to provide this opportunity for just anyone or any place. So I was really excited about this. I know Kristi's very, very excited. I don't know about her husband, but, and the girls, but I know that she is. And so we're very, we're very appreciative of this opportunity to continue the partnership for our school district and our students. I think that's it.
Okay.
Sorry, it was long, I apologize.
No, no, thank you, thank you very much. It's all-important information that the public needs to know. Okay, we're up to announcements. On Monday, March 2nd, 2020, there'll be an Instructional Committee meeting in the Board of Education Conference Room, 100 South Turnpike Road, at 6:30 PM. On Monday, March 9th, 2020, there'll be an Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 PM in the Board of Education Conference Room, 100 South Turnpike Road. The date of our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, March 23rd, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Immediately prior to that, we will have a retiree reception in Room 315 at 6:00 PM. And the meeting, the regular meeting will be here at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers, and if there is no further business of an official nature to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Thank you, thank you very much.